Good evening. If you would all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(coughing)
Well, I would like to welcome everybody to tonight's council meeting. The first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. The listing under the consent agenda is a group of items that are to be acted upon with a single motion or vote. The agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. It saves us time. I will ask if a citizen or a member of the council would like to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion, and at that time, a member of the public or a member of council may request that an item be removed prior to the council's vote. The items on tonight's consent agenda include approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of October 25, 2016, approval of the expenditure vouchers for November 8, 2016, approval of a renewal tavern liquor license for Cortez Veterans located on North Harrison, approval of a renewal brew pub liquor license for the mainstream brewery restaurant. Is there anybody in the audience or anybody on council that would like to remove any of those items? All right, in that case, may I have a motion, please?
Honorable Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the addition of $480,231.52.
Keel?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye. We do have a presentation this evening. The auditors from Holsher, Mayberry &amp; Company are going to present the audit this evening.
I'm going to introduce Tim. Tim is Tim Mayberry. He's one of the principals in Holsher, Mayberry &amp; Company. He's also the lead auditor, and that's all I'm going to say, and I'm going to turn it over to him.
Thank you for having me out this evening. I have a short presentation. I won't bore you too much. Not a lot to discuss related to your financial operations. This is for the fiscal year ended June or December 31, 2015. Biggest thing that occurred during the year is obviously the purchase of the new City Hall. That affected your general fund. You spent that down. You spent down your general fund a little bit, approximately $2.6 million. I'm not going to flip through all the pages and go through all of the numbers, but you did spend down your general fund a little bit in order to do that. You still have adequate reserves in your general fund, so no concerns there. To preserve your cash balance in general fund, you did borrow $1 million from Recreation Fund, which will be repaid over time. That was probably the biggest adjustment that we actually had as part of the audit process. But again, no concerns. Even though you did have that large outlay, no concerns with what your carryover is. As far as overall operations or where your funds are, again, similarly, your fund structure or your fund balances are in good shape, other than, and I think Kathy said she had already mentioned to you, the self-insurance fund. You're always going to have to keep an eye on that. Unfortunately, from a generally accepted accounting perspective, we have to book a liability in there, which creates a deficit fund balance or a deficit net position. You guys tend to look at that as a cash basis. What are the claims coming in and making sure that you fund those claims? But you'll need to make sure that you have adequate resources in order to cover that. There is one other thing that doesn't necessarily rise to having a deficit necessarily in the fund itself, but city...
The community?
The community, the fiber network.
Yeah.
Has positive equity, and this is actually, it shows up towards the back of the report or in the back section in the other enterprise funds. But you actually have positive equity, but the only equity that's in there that's left is the actual system itself. The regular cash balance and/or current resources is actually a deficit, so you'll want to make sure or monitor that. I may just flip back to show you where that's at. It's a little more complicated than the self-insurance. We have lots of pages in your audit. So if you want to fall asleep at night, read the whole thing front to back.
They've already got a copy of the budget here.
So this is, if you get to that point and you want to take a look at it, this is actually on page 51 of your audit report. You actually have $471,000 worth of net position or equity in that fund. Of that, you have a $20,000 unrestricted carryover deficit, so you're slightly in the hole there. Unfortunately, the system itself obviously cannot be used to pay bills, so you have to make sure that there's enough resources in there to go ahead and meet your obligations. Results of operations for last year, it's actually positive to a certain extent. You had $80,000 loss per the books, and this would be on page 52 if you want to flip back to that when you pull it out from your nightstand. Most of that is depreciation, which is a non-cash item. So on a cash basis, you're actually positive, but you still, that's going to run a little tight, so just keep an eye on that. Operations-wise, everything is working well. I know Kathy's excited with the new accounting software. I know you're still working through a few bugs, but it's got to be a lot easier than working with what you had in the past. Our main suggestion going forward, and always is the case, is that Kathy does more review than prep, and I think the new accounting software will actually facilitate that a little bit, because your old one was hard enough to use that there are certain reports that she was the only one who could run them for us. Your new one, basically anybody can go in and run those reports as long as they have access to it. So they can do more of that prep work, and then Kathy can actually get to a review stage where she's making sure everything's working instead of actually prepping stuff for us. So we think the audit will go smoother. We understand that anytime there's a conversion, there may be some issues, and we'll have to be taking a look at that. But all in all, your accounting structure's working well. Outside of those two funds, we really don't have any issues related to your financial operations or your carryforwards. And I didn't mention this, you do receive a clean opinion. Everything is fairly stated. And again, probably the biggest adjustment we did was showing that cash loan between Recreation and General just to facilitate purchasing City Hall. So, any questions?
Do you feel, given our current amount of revenue that we keep in reserves, is in good standing with other communities of our same size?
That is always a good question, and I'll tell you that I don't have a good answer for that.
Well, thank you.
You have about a three-month operating reserve in General Fund, and that's your main operating fund. You had, obviously, before that large cash outlay, significant resources, and at that point, you had plenty, no concerns whatsoever. Even utilizing those resources to purchase the new City Hall, you're still healthy, but you don't have as much cushion as you did before. And we've talked about that a little bit internally as far as, yes, you spend, and how do you manage that? That should build back up over time, as you would expect. And again, you, how much did you spend on capital outlay last year?
Totally?
Yeah, just in general?
Just in general? Oh, gosh, I can't remember right now. I'm on budget.
I know.
But the biggest one was the...
I was going to say, I think if I remember right, you spent more...
I think it was $2.6 million total. It was $2 million that we did for the City Hall purchase, $1 million from the Rec Center, and then other capital was $600,000.
Okay. So you spent more on capital than you spent down in General Fund in total. So you spent more in one-time purchases? So if you would not have had that, you would have been positive for the year, so that's where we're saying. Over time, that balance will build back up. Three months is more than reasonable. The biggest thing, though, when you're trying to say, where are we at relative to other communities? Each community is different in how they operate, what your sources of revenues are. Yes, some communities are definitely more sales tax-driven, some are more property tax-driven. It also depends upon what are your future plans? What capital outlay do you have? You just spent a large portion of capital outlay or a large amount on capital outlay, but that doesn't necessarily mean that... Best way to put this. If you don't necessarily have large capital needs coming up, then that's okay to spend that down and let it build back up. Now, if you would spend it down to three months and say, "But our budget isn't even covering itself..."
And we have this against...
Then we've got an issue, because now your three months goes to two months, goes to one month, and then what do you do? That's not where you guys are at. The amount that you spent down was, again, one-time purchases.
Right. And if I can't tell you, if you guys look on the first page of your budget, you see our annual fund balance at the end of 2015 was $4.4 million. We're projecting to end this year at right at $4 million. And so the actual cash swing, you know, we kind of catch up with it. And almost always, the budget we adopt after we've had our audit, after we kind of get our revised numbers to see where we ended up, we almost always end up carrying forward more cash than we thought. We have a better fund balance.
Yeah.
So we always adopt these things trying to be as pessimistic as possible.
Yes.
So we always get a pleasant surprise after the audit. So I think, you know, really, from one year to the next, we've had this purchase, and we're sitting with $500,000 less in the bank than we had a year ago, but we just, we're adding a $5.5 million asset. I think that's pretty good.
Well, it'll save you money over time, too, because it's a more efficient asset.
Right.
I see. And then one of the big things, and that's where you've been able to do to a certain extent, is build up resources and not have to take out a lot of debt to do large capital projects versus, you know, every time we do something, we have to go out and take out a loan to do this. You're able to facilitate a lot of, not a lot, not all, but like your general fund stuff, you're just being able to pay for that directly instead of actually having to borrow and increase that debt load. So now your utilities are obviously a different scenario, but that's just because the costs there are just outrageous.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Well, I appreciate you having me out this evening, and hopefully the rest of you...
Please look forward to meeting in our new City Hall.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Keel, would you like to introduce your guests?
Oh, sure. So I have several of my students here with us tonight. They really, really desired to come to a city council meeting, and that's why they're all here. Free will.
No force.
They said, "We will come to every city council meeting until the day we die." And I thought, "Wow, what a bunch of great civic minded kids." No, it's a quasi-project we have going in class where they could either write endlessly or show up and get some credit. Yeah, it's a little bit of bragging, right? Anyway, thanks, guys, for coming out. I appreciate it. Meeting's not over, by the way. This isn't a goodbye, so you've got to sit through a little bit more.
Do any...
Yeah, we have some pins for you guys. You want me to do it now?
Sure. Do it now. And while Mr. Keel is passing you, passing out some city fans, do any of you have any questions? We represent you guys as well as other citizens of the community, so if you have some questions or concerns, this is the time to ask. Ty, what class is this?
This is several of my different classes. One of my...
Don't all speak at once. No. Different age groups, also? I'll tell you, because we have a minute here, why don't you, if you just take a quick spin up to the mic and just tell us who you, just give us your name and...
Your name and grade.
You're going, "Really?" We'll start with you in the front row.
Yeah. Liam?
I'm Tom. I'm in Tennessee.
My name's Dean. I'm also in Tennessee.
Why don't you stand, because it's easier for us to hear. It's easier for me to hear. And speak up.
I'm Alan. I'm in Austin.
Okay.
You guys, the mayor's going to make you all introduce yourselves.
Yes, the mayor's going to make you do this. So you can do it fast or you can do it slow. I think you're next, and you... Uh-huh.
Hi. I'm Tyler Paulson. I'm Ryan Medina. I'm Ethan John in Tennessee.
I'm asking you to come to Tennessee.
Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate you guys. Come on, thanks.
Even if it was a bribe.
Public speaking is so good for you. All right. This is a time set aside for citizen participation. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address council? All right. In that case, we don't have any public hearings. We don't have any unfinished business, so moving on to new business. Quotament of the Parks and Rec, Parks Recreation and Forestry Advisory Board.
It's a little low here. Hey, were you using the oarly or what?
That's where it's supposed to be.
Once you see the phone booked, huh?
So, yes, I'm hearing tonight, we have a new potential Parks and Rec and Forestry Advisory Board candidate, and just, I'm going to read here. The Parks Recreation and Forest Street Advisory Board for the City of Cortez consists of nine voting members, and all members shall be Montezuma County residents. Currently, one adult vacancy exists for the Parks Recreation and Forest Street Advisory Board. The city has received a letter of interest from Rachel Medina to fill the one adult vacancy. The Parks and Rec and Forest Street Advisory Board members interviewed Rachel Medina at their Friday, October 21, 2016, meeting, and have given their unanimous support for Rachel Medina to serve a two-year term on the Parks Recreation and Forest Street Advisory Board. For this evening, the city council may either choose to interview the candidate prior to making its decision, or it could forego the interview and simply base its decision upon review of her letter of interest and the recommendation of the Parks Recreation and Forest Street Advisory Board. And, you know, I think we were really impressed. Bob, were you at that meeting? But I was really impressed by this individual. She really knew about our park system more than even some of our existing advisory board members, so I really would recommend that she be a part of that. And she had, if you read her letter of interest, she's an outdoor enthusiast and works with the county with the GIS department there, so...
Very, very well-written letter. She works with Doug Roth, and she's really a sharp young lady. She's fantastic. And while we have you here, though, before council goes, so how many youth spots do we have on the Parks and Rec Board?
We have two high school youth spots, and we have one filled by Blair Rice, if you know Blair Rice. And we have one vacancy open right now.
I mean, talk about killing your high school or your college application.
Exactly. And we, in fact, I mean, one of the youth served on the golf advisory board, and she actually did end up getting a future job, Casalia Plu, because of her serving on the golf advisory board. So there is a lot of good potential for resumes for college and future employment. So I definitely encourage if, if meets once a month, every, the third Friday of the month from 7:00, 8:00 o'clock in the morning, and we don't expect you to make every meeting, but...
Yeah, we do.
I'm being encouraged on the wrong way.
And I would just say, I mean, it's a real position. It's full voting members, so our youth advisory has the same say, the same vote as anybody else on there. Parks and Rec advisory, I mean, focused on the Rec Center, the park system, you know, everything that we have going on. So I'd encourage any of you guys that are interested in the park system, it really is a way to, I think, get involved with your city and really have a voice in how we shape the parks, so...
And we really do, you know, we've had Blair Rice presently on there, Jasmine Stroud, and we really have valued what the youth have to say and really want to listen to get another perspective on any topic that we're bringing forth at those meetings. So we really do value the youth's input, and we'd like to see another one, you know, and maybe one of you, if you're interested, just do a...
Well, Dean, let's do this. If anybody's interested, this guy's name is Dean Palmquist. He's the Parks and Rec Director. So after the meeting, if you're interested, please go up to Dean, and he'd be happy to give you what information you need to know.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank both of you. You know how much heck I'm going to get from these guys tomorrow when they say, "Thank you, Keel, that you hit us up, don't go to work."
We never have this much youth. I'm sure you'll give them more bonus points, right, Ty?
It's golf advisory board, it's a different story.
Well, the truth is, you're never too young. You get involved in community service sorts of things, and if recreation and those kinds of things are things that you enjoy, then this is a really wonderful opportunity to kind of combine pleasure with something that would have some real meaning for your community. And as somebody said earlier, it looks really good on your resume for college or higher education, so... All right. Well, council, are there any other questions about Rachel Medina? May I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Rachel Medina to serve on the Parks Recreation and Forest Advisory Board.
Archibek?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Sheik?
Thank you.
Ah, council, like the December 27 meeting, Linda?
So moved. That was hard.
It's a tradition.
I know.
So, so moved.
Second.
Lucero?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye. I'm just kidding.
Archibek? You can go.
Let's see here.
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
Thank you.
We got a Christmas party?
January. The fee waiver request for a home occupation permit is near here?
And I'm sorry, that's been requested. So Ms. Howe contacted Niva earlier today and said that she no longer intends to apply for a home occupation permit.
Oh, okay.
And so I just told Niva, "Stay home and watch the electoral college."
This is off...
Off the table.
Is there, did she give a reason why she wasn't applying for it?
I got this second part, because I just heard that she didn't, I believe her issue was that her landlord didn't know if she should run a building consultant out of her apartment, and she talked to planning and building, who said, "Well, if you had a home occupation permit, it's not that big of a deal. You don't have a high-impact business." And so I think it was based on that, so I don't know if that conversation has changed with her landlord or what's going on, so...
Thank you.
All right. Then in that case, we'll move on to the City Hall solar.
All right, thank you. So we have been exploring the benefits of placing a solar array on the new City Hall. As discussed at the previous meetings, there is merit in having this installation completed alongside the roof replacement to ensure that no damage is done to our new membrane through our architectural and engineering consultants on the City Hall project. Two solar companies in Durango were identified as possible avenues to provide the size of system that would provide a decent ROI. And so it pays back over long-term, but not really bust our budget in the short term. The two proposals we considered were from SolarWorks, who proposed a 14.1 kilowatt system for $45,868, and Shaw Solar, who proposed a 14-kilowatt system for $43,000. I put asterisks there because we actually need to hit that 14.1 size, so the next size up is 14.1.
Would that help just with our lead?
It does. It would be three lead points, so it would be, the most you can get for solar is three. But we'd have to hit that 14.1, so we size this, the next size over the 14-kilowatt, which is 14.3. So I just want to put the asterisks because they're initial proposal versus what we actually selected. So really, the largest difference in the two proposals is that Shaw has a performance lease option. We went through those numbers at the last workshop, that basically the city would make annual payments of $4,100 with a buyout provision in year six. The total cost of the city for this $40,000 system would be $36,000. The reason why that math works in our favor is because Shaw Solar takes the 30% federal tax credits, they take renewable energy credits, basically any incentive to put solar on, they take those. But quite frankly, as a government, we couldn't take advantage of any of those credits anyway, and so we end up better off. We get a grade system for a lot less expensive than we could buy it off the shelf, and they get all the incentive. So it's a classic win-win. The staff recommends the city council move to authorize the mayor to sign the solar agreement between the city and Solar Garden Partners, too, LLC.
So is Shaw Solar...
Well, it's Shaw, but their DBA is Solar, is Solar Garden Partners. I'm sorry, that's confusing, but I did the entire memo, and we've been dealing with Shaw Solar, and then I looked at their lease, and their legal DBA is Solar Garden Partners.
Thank you for the clarification.
And thank you for paying attention, Councilman Carlson. You really, thank you.
That's why she gets the big bucks.
That's right. So what you're looking at is the 43/4, correct? No, sir. This would be, if council awards this, this will be a $4,100 payment that's added into the 2017 budget. So we don't have any cash upfront. It's really our first...
For the next six years?
Yeah, for the next five. That's right, and on year six, we'd have the balloon. So this will be...
And it's not an option, you're committing to do that?
Oh, there's a difference, sir. Well, it's a lease purchase, so if we don't make the payment, they come and take their panels back.
Is there an advantage to not doing it with a balloon payment and taking a little bit more on the front end?
Well, and that's actually, that's what this represents. Initially, when they had proposed it, I think it was the payments were in the $3,000 range, and the balloon payment was higher, and the ROI was 12 for 13 years. And so I worked with John Chox, I said, "Look, we'd really like an ROI less than 10 years." And he said, "Well, if you could lessen my risk upfront and make higher payments," and so that's how we ended up with this structure.
At an increase of about, approximately $1,100?
Yeah, and maybe it was $3,200, $330, but yeah. So the annual payment is very nominal, but they have to own the system for five full years in order to take advantage of the tax credits, which is why on day one of year six, we have the balloon payment. So I think this is about, is good of a structure, we'll see.
And it comes with training and all that for staff on general upkeep?
Well, but we're, our staff is going to, whenever they go on our roof, our staff is going to go up there with them. I think it's part of the routine. We do have the option to contract with them after this lease is out, if we have any questions or any upkeep questions, but, you know, I don't think it's out of our staff's capability at all to do that after they've been up on the roof with us.
And I was just clarifying, too. Even once we paid it off in year six or whatever that is, the warranty is still a fact.
That's right.
And they will still honor that, and they'll still be the company that will service that system.
Well, they wouldn't be the company that serviced it. The warranties that were provided are from the solar manufacturer, the panel manufacturer, and the, I always think, the thing that transfers the...
The inverter.
Yeah, the inverter, thank you. So the inverter, the manufacturer of the inverter gives us a 25-year warranty, and the manufacturer of the panels gives us 25-year warranty, so that's who it would be through.
So we'd just go directly to them?
Well, and quite frankly, I think we would, work through Shaw Solar and say, "We're having a problem with the panel," and have them help us facilitate that. But it's not, Shaw hasn't given us the warranty. I think that they're warning their work and what they put up is going to work for us, but if we have any... But, but if we have any manufacturer defect, it would be on the manufacturer.
In the first five years, they're the owners, so they'd be making the claim anyway.
But the, but the 25, it starts from day one, right? Once the crank starts. Yeah, it wouldn't be 25 after we take a decision. That's what I was gonna say. Yeah. See a company do that, it's like, whoa.
No, yeah, it's just that the first five years, they have to make the claim, not us, 'cause they're the owners, is all.
So in other words, we're just borrowing from Paul's pay Peter. Well, no, I think we're able to, um, if you, if you look at the forecast, um, electricity bill for this amount of electricity, um, you know, in year one, this amount of electricity, the city would pay $2,800 to $2,500 to Empire. That's just what we would pay for this amount of electricity regardless. Uh, so our lease payment is $4,100, so we're paying that differential. Um, but we actually hit, um, uh, the ROI, and I had that in the last number, but it's pretty, pretty early on. So I think the system hits our ROI, uh, year seven or eight. Do you guys remember? I don't, I don't remember from that last memo, but it, it's in the first few years when, when the, the electricity we would have paid for in the bill that we would have paid to Empire, when that actually pays us back our initial capital of, uh, purchase. So obviously, we're borrowing from Peter to pay Paul. I think we're, we're putting the panels on with a fairly quick ROI to the taxpayers, and, and most of the time that we have these panels on the roof, they'll be producing for us.
So savings over the long term?
The, the second term, unless parties agree to an extended agreement term, city agrees to purchase the solar system for the buyout price of $1,568. Very first, 2023?
Yeah, it's 17, 18, 19, oh, it should be 2020. We have, our first payment, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21.
Yeah.
So it'd be 22.
Yeah, they're, they're off on their year.
Okay, uh, that's a good catch. We can...
Good.
First, we'd have a free year.
Mike and I only read through this nine times.
Don't say anything until 2022. Like, January, December, the first...
Tell him the contract's over with.
Gotta get your panels.
Okay.
I was reading this on my seat.
Well, that's an easy thing to miss.
No, that, that's a good catch. So, so we can make that amendment easily before the mayor executes it.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Uh, you know, I'd just like to say thank you to you guys for, uh, entertaining me on this. I always, um, things that are innovative and can, um, you know, I can leave as a legacy as far as, uh, lessening the cost to, to the taxpayer, as far as, uh, how much money they have to pay for things like electricity. And, uh, I look at my students out there and think, maybe one of these days, if they're still sticking around here, they'll benefit from this kind of action by our city councils. Thanks a lot, we appreciate it. I mean, not that we voted it through.
It's a good investment.
Saying thanks in case we do.
So, so could I have a motion?
Honorable Mayor, I'd make a motion that the, uh, city council authorized the mayor to sign the solar lease agreement between the City of Cortez and Solar Garden Partners II LLC
Second.
With the amendment to have the balloon payment in 2022.
Okay, second.
Carlson?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Archibek?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Lucero?
If it pays off, I, yeah.
Keel?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
Okay, uh, we have no draft resolutions, uh, no other items of business. Now, is there anybody that would like to come and speak for counsel? We always, for the students' benefit, we always have two times set aside in, in council meetings where citizens have the opportunity at the beginning and near the end of, uh, each council meeting to come and address counsel if they choose to. All right, seeing nobody step forward, we don't have a city attorney...
You didn't give them enough of a chance. I think about a couple, and they get ready to come up and talk.
Would somebody like to speak for?
I'm just kidding.
They already have, they already have done. Um, does the city manager have an update?
No, Your Honor.
City council committee reports.
I went to historic preservation. Um, they were talking about the parade, the Parade of Lights is coming out, and the theme this year is a journey through historic Cortez or something of that nature. Um, it's gonna be held on the 3rd of December. And if you need posters, Terri McCabe has the posters, you can get them from her. They just, they rolled out a batch of them, and I saw one, and they look really nice. Um, and then they're doing the inventory of the south side of Main Street to finish off the district, except they needed to have 24 businesses pursue it to their grant. And whenever they did the preliminary inventory, they found out that two of the 24 they thought they had were actually one, two businesses in one address, which took them down to 22. So they're going to survey the building where Medicine Man is, um, even though it's on the north side of Main Street. They're gonna add it to the survey, and then they're going to survey the Nero's Sands Hotel building, and they're gonna add that to it. And, um, Linda did talk about stepping down, however, she was unanimously, no, she was not unanimously voted in. One person abstained, but she, she was voted back in for another year, even though she kind of wanted to step down. But she's looking to be replaced within the next year. That was basically...
And she and I, I think, are gonna meet this January to just talk about kind of her role, what she does, you know?
She, she did say it, it takes up a lot of her time, and she gave us some statistics. I think she said this year alone, she's devoted 230-some hours to historic preservation.
She's very thorough.
And she said, "I'm retired, you know, this is kind of more than what I realized I wanted to do." And so I don't really know what her plans are, but she did get voted in again for another year. So I guess we have a year to decide what to do with that.
Do you think we could change the code and make the, the chair a five-year position?
Lifetime, yeah.
Actually, I would say lifetime, that's a classic, yep.
Something about the 13th Amendment, voluntary serve, too, that I don't think you can...
Orley nominated you as the chair for the president.
Oh, that's not how the code reads, Orley.
I'm reading it right here. Pointed by the board.
Um, are there, are there any...
Uh, I, I was not present for the, the final golf advisory board meeting. Uh, I do know that...
Don't take that, kids.
That were, uh, discussion on, um, projects for the golf course were, were one of the main things that they discussed for this upcoming year, and, um, possible equipment that you guys are looking at needing for, uh, the golf course.
I think, uh, the majority of the discussion was on, uh, annual passes and revenues, and just trying to get that cost recovery, um, back up a little bit. Um, yeah, the, the new, uh, black tee box, the number nine, was a discussion that's, that's going now, so... Um, and some of the equipment, I think, council, uh, heard tonight about a request for the sprayer on the greens, um, to apply fertilizer. So that was...
Economic development canceled until they see the results of the election.
Good point.
Are you serious?
Yeah. No, that's not what they said. They said, "We encourage you to go vote," so we're gonna skip it.
Oh, I got you.
Did they say anything about who was... Yeah.
Good point, good point, good committee.
Nicely worded.
Orley, were you able to make the swearing-in?
Yeah.
Did you report?
It was a long day.
I'm sure.
No, it was, it went okay. It was just a typical swearing-in when the outgoing members go out, and then the, for the tribe there, and then the new members come in, and it's, yeah.
Thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
Going down, and that's, but it was, it was good.
I didn't stay for dinner, but the line was too long. No, but it was, it went good, and I think the, the outgoing, I think, I didn't sound too hard feeling some, on the people in there, so then the new group coming in, it sounded pretty positive. But the only thing is that, uh, I kind of mentioned to a few that try to keep still in touch, type, so...
I, I, I did send, since I was in Durango and couldn't, couldn't attend, I did send a letter down, and, um, you know, some of the city council would really like to, like to work with the tribal council, and suggested that maybe, um, they might want to set aside, maybe the days of our two January meetings, and they might want to probably come down and have their, and visit the workshop. So we'll see. I'll continue to kind of follow up on that and see what...
Yeah, so you might, might look at it, what is it, the 5th? The 5th Tuesday or something of a month? Schedule something like that. On the 5th Tuesday. The month that we don't have a meeting anywhere. You already have the two meetings, maybe once a year or something.
I think, I think we did something going, maybe even...
I mean, just, just to break the ice, what I was looking at, just to break the ice that way.
They agree, we'll see, so...
Well, and I think at least initially, when we get into the start of the year, I mean, you guys know the workshops, as the year ramps up, just get completely taken. Um, but normally, January, February, we have enough room to where if we could, um, you know, host tribal council, I think we could just make that the workshop. It would just be kind of a non-adjented workshop, where we just said, "Break bread with, um, you know, see what's going on," and, um, you might be a tribe, and vice versa. So that, that would be the concept, and I like that idea. I mean, quite frankly, if, if we had a tribal council respond back with any dates or times that would work for them, my sense is from council is we would, we would do everything we could to make it work. Uh, but right now, um, the mayor just suggested a couple days in January, and picked them, and said, "Let us know if you can attend either one."
Yep, thank you.
Um, the report from the workshop, we really spent all of the time on budget. We had, um, uh, department heads from the police department, Parks and Rec, Mesa Verde Country, Kathy Moss came to visit, uh, about the self-insured health plan, and the city manager talked about that, that budget. So, um, we had a chance to figure where we stand in those. And there really wasn't much time for any general discussions. Uh, at this time, we are going to adjourn to an executive session, which means that, um, we'll be discussing, um, uh, an issue that pertains to the city that, um, needs to be discussed and tried, and we will, it will be recorded in the back room, but we will be with participation. Um, and when the, when the executive session is over, we'll come back here and we'll adjourn the meeting, so...
Well, you guys are free to, free to go. Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you so much for coming.
You guys are gonna get an A+?
Yeah.
A+ for the submission.
For sure.
We would love for you to come again.
How important sleep is to them at this age.
We don't need to have a motion to do that.
They're sleeping class.
No, we need a motion to go to executive session.
Okay.
So...
We, I mean, whoever, I just need a motion.
Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Just anybody.
Make a motion to go into executive session?
Okay.
What we need for the... For the purpose of receiving legal advice.
From the city attorney.
Who's gonna give us the legal?
Miller?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.